Can you hear me back there? We welcome you to the Pittsvenny County Board of Supervisors Work Session, Tuesday, December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, at three P. M. Kayla, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dusha?
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Mr. Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Mr. Ingram.
Present. Thank you. Are there any items to be added to the agenda? Here and none. Alan, you want to go ahead and call the roll for your folks now, or Emily?
All right, so I'll start with BZI. Mr. Easley. Ms. Deering. Mr. Craddock. Mr. Merricks. Mr. Yaman. Mr. Brumfield. Mr. Stone.
Thank you. What about a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I need to call Planning Commission.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Webb. Mr. Harker. Mr. Oaks. Ms. Meese. Ms. Henderson. Mr. Horn. Mr. Waters. Mr. Dalton.
Here. All right, thank you. What about a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I think Mr. Chester beat you, so I'll take a second from you.
I'll second it.
If no discussion, go ahead and cast your vote.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to state for the record that Ms. Meese just arrived at three oh two.
Okay. Do we need to get her a seat, or?
She wants to come down and sit by.
Janet, come on down. We have one seat left. Come on.
And we've got more chairs if we need them.
Say it again. Good to have you. You look all Christmasy. Always good to see you. Good? Okay, that approval has been almost unanimous? Okay, now we're down to presentations.
Mr. Warren, I don't have your vote on here. I think it's because of your laptop. Can I get yours verbally?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's been adopted. Now we're down to five presentations. Let's see, who heads that one up?
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Caroline Van Terv, and with me today is Rebecca Cobb, and we are here on behalf of the Berkeley Group. The county has hired us to update the zoning ordinance, and we're here today to present the progress of drafting the first four articles of the ordinance. So the first three articles of the ordinance are in general administration, permits and applications, and we'll also be reviewing the article addressing nonconforming uses, lots, and structures. And I'll also give a quick overview of project progress, just to catch us back up to speed of where we've been over the last few months. So as you recall, we started off this ordinance update with a thorough investigation and public engagement phase. You'll recall that we completed a diagnostic report on the full zoning ordinance and the relationship between the zoning ordinance and the county's comprehensive plan, and presented that to the board, the Planning Commission, and the BZI in October. In October, we also presented the findings of the public outreach and engagement items, including focus groups, stakeholder sessions, one public workshop, and a public survey that was distributed online and in paper around the county. So this phase is complete, and we are now in the thick of the drafting phase. Today, we'll be reviewing Articles one, two, three, and nine, so again, general and administrative provisions, permits and applications, and nonconformities. At our next work session in February, we'll be reviewing district standards and overlay districts. And then, once drafting is complete, at the end of next year, we'll move into the adoption phase. We'll bring the complete draft ordinance back to the public one more time at an open house meeting, and then the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors will move into their pre-adoption work sessions to prepare for public hearings and adoption in spring or summer of 2024. So that's where we're at now. And today, we will be reviewing the major changes of Articles one, two, three, and nine. Before we begin our review of chapter content and discussion, I just want to clarify a few things. The first being that we will only be reviewing major changes to the articles today for sake of time. In the packets that staff provided you in the draft ordinance sections, you'll see that there are many footnotes and editor's notes, and those editor's notes, when you're reviewing the ordinance, they help break down the changes that are being made, where things are new, where things from the current ordinance have been taken out, why certain changes were made. So if you have any questions, please feel free to refer to the editor editor's notes for greater detail. I'll have slides on here that go over the major changes, and I'll pause after each one for questions and discussion. If you have any revisions that you would like to suggest, or questions that you would like to ask, please do so at that time. If we don't hear any questions or comments, we'll assume that means you all are happy with the draft content, and we'll keep moving on. So Article One is in general. Article One is largely based off of state code and the regulations in Code of Virginia. I'll sound like a broken record when I'm talking about this section, but the majority of this section really is to achieve state code compliance with enactment and authority of the ordinance, how conflicts with the ordinance are handled, as well as the authority of the county to interpret the zoning ordinance, the establishment and the interpretation of the zoning districts map, and the transition of regulations after adoption, which includes a section on the effective date of the ordinance and vested rights. So again, the new content in Article One is intended to comply with Code of Virginia regulations. They give Pittsvenny County the authority to regulate land development within its jurisdiction, and also call for uniform regulations. If you remember the diagnostic report that we presented to you all at the October work session, you'll recall that one of the major takeaways was needing to ensure that the new zoning ordinance is brought into full compliance with the Code of Virginia, and so you'll see not just in Article One, but in all the articles being reviewed today and moving forward, that there are many state code references. We've also included some verbatim text from the Code of Virginia, where inclusion of that text directly is more appropriate. And then, as we've heard in our conversations with staff and with the community, we have reorganized the ordinance, and in order to streamline and edit for readability, one of the major concerns that we heard from the community was the desire to have an ordinance that it's easy to understand, it's easy to follow, it's easy for staff to understand and interpret, it's easy for you all to understand when you're making decisions related to land use, and so we've attempted to reorganize and introduce user-friendly language as much as possible without taking away from the meaning of the regulation. So the slide on your screen demonstrates the most significant changes in Article One. Again, much of this is based on state code, so there's not really any room for leeway here, but I did want to point out some of the major changes from what is in the county's ordinance currently. So the first revision to note is Section one dash three dash three, interpretation of zoning district boundaries. So this section provides additional details related to the authority of the county to interpret zoning district boundaries. This text proposes to provide the zoning administrator with the authority to interpret zoning district boundaries. Currently, the ordinance reads that the BZI has the authority to interpret zoning district boundaries. As a best practice, we generally recommend that decisions and interpretations such as these are conducted at the administrative level, and if there is an appeal of the administrator's decision related to zoning district boundaries, that can be heard and decided by the BZI, and we have some information about that in Article Two. Section one dash four dash four incorporates Code of Virginia language that allows completion of a project as approved with an application. The Code of Virginia says that an approved final subdivision plot shall be valid for five years from the date of the approval. The current zoning ordinance states that if construction does not commence within thirty days after the effective date of the ordinance, or if construction stops for six months or longer, then the construction has to conform with the regulations of the underlying zoning district. So that timeframe doesn't match what the Code of Virginia states, so we've updated that timeframe to say if you submit a final plat, it's approved by the county, you have five years to complete your construction accordingly. It's also important to note that, again, many zoning permits have construction deadlines and their conditions, and then building permits and building code, of course, have their own requirements related to construction. And then finally, Section one dash four dash six, vested rights. It provides protection for the vested rights of property owners and allows the zoning administrator to make determinations related to vested rights. We included this because it's a required section of state code. The current ordinance doesn't have any language related to vested rights, so we updated it to ensure that everything related to vested rights is being included as state code allows. Are there any questions regarding these three sections, or any of the other content within Article One? Any other comments, or are you all satisfied with Article One? All right. Article Two is administration. Article Two is included to address how the zoning ordinance will be administered, and it also covers the roles and responsibilities of the zoning administrator, the planning commission, and the BZI. It also covers enforcement, so again, the authority of the county and the zoning administrator to enforce the ordinance, violations of the ordinance and how those are remedied, and then both civil and criminal penalties for ordinance violations. They also include a section on fees, and then a section on taxes and expenses paid, both of which are new and not currently included in the current ordinance. So again, you'll see here that much of Article Two also incorporates Code of Virginia requirements. We've updated references to code sections, and then we've included several items that are required by state code but not currently included in the ordinance, and those include items relating to ex parte communications, disclosure of conflicts of interest, and the contents of notices of violation. So again, these are all things that are happening in practice, but because they are required by state code, they need to be spelled out explicitly in the ordinance, and so we've made the update to do just that. And then again, you'll see that we've moved items for readability, and to streamline the content, we've edited some of the existing text for readability, and then added that new user-friendly language where appropriate. So a major aspect of Article Two is breaking down the respective roles and responsibilities of the administrator, planning commission, and the BZI, and just as a quick refresher, the administrator is appointed by the Board of Supervisors. They're responsible for interpreting the ordinance and investigating violations of the ordinance. They ensure compliance with the ordinance. They determine the vested rights of property owners, and they conduct administrative reviews of site development plans, and I'll talk more about site plans in detail at a later slide. But you'll see in the Article Two draft, we've included an exhaustive list of all the responsibilities that state code grants to the zoning administrator, just for clarity, and so the public is aware what this county staff member has the authority to do. The Planning Commission is a recommending body, not a regulatory body, so they're appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Planning commissioners are responsible to making recommendations related to comprehensive plans and rezonings, as well as special use permits and variances, and you all have those recommendations going to the BZI. And then the BZI is the quasi-judicial regulatory body. Members are appointed by the Circuit Court, and they're responsible for hearing variances, appeals, special use permits, and hearing appeals of the zoning administrator's decisions, especially with regard to the interpretation of district boundaries. So the first major revision to note is Section two dash one dash one, appointment, powers, and duties of the zoning administrator. Again, we've made sure to provide the full list of duties of the administrator as provided for in state code, just to make sure that that clarity is there for the general public. Section two dash three dash three, meetings and procedures of the BZI. This is a new section. The current zoning ordinance currently does not contain any meeting and procedural requirements for the BZI. However, this is outlined in the Code of Virginia, and so we've included this section just to make sure this is in the county's ordinance for clarity as well. You'll see that also applies to the Planning Commission. There is a section related to Planning Commission meetings and procedures, so now all of that information is included and covered in the ordinance. So the BZI can utilize it, the Planning Commission can utilize it, and it's also a tool for the public that they can use to know and understand what goes on at these meetings. Section two dash four dash four is probably the most significant change to this article. Currently, the county is pursuing misdemeanor violation, or excuse me, misdemeanor penalties for zoning violations. We have proposed to introduce a new provision that introduces civil penalties as a first line of defense, and once the aggregate fine for civil penalties reaches $5,000, then the county is able to pursue misdemeanor violations. So this is a general best practice. We see that more and more localities in Virginia are moving to civil penalties first and then pursuing misdemeanors. It frees the zoning administrator of some of their workload, especially related to any court procedures. Also, it is common that counties find that introducing civil penalties and fines is effective in getting a violator to stop pretty early on. So we've proposed to include that, and you'll see in the zoning ordinance draft, you'll see the dollar amounts for this minimum and maximums, and those were taken from the Code of Virginia. Are there any questions about any of those sections before I move on?
Excuse me. You said the last section, that was best practices? That's where that came from?
Yes, sir. So Section two dash four dash four, that is in the Code of Virginia, so state code allows counties to pursue civil penalties first and then move to misdemeanor penalties. It's an optional provision, meaning that the county isn't required to implement it, but it is just a general best practice that localities use as a tool for pursuing these violations effectively. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. What kind of fees and fines are you talking about on this?
Are you asking for the specific dollar amounts?
Yes, ma'am.
So the initial summons, the fine would be $200.
Okay.
So that's the initial fine, and then a fine of $500 for each additional summons, and the key with the additional $500 is that it has to be arising from the same set of operative facts as the initial violation, and so once that total aggregate penalty reaches $5,000, that kind of tips it into misdemeanor penalties. And those numbers are from state code.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or items I can help clarify?
What kind of timeframe between fines?
So each day a violation exists is considered to be a separate violation. It is based, so it has the timeframe, but it's more so based on the dollar amount of hitting that $5,000 threshold.
Okay, so state code doesn't give them thirty days from the first fine, or?
To get it straight.
Rebecca might be able to answer that question better than I would be.
So I don't have that code up right now, but there are some limitations in terms of, like, you can't just, like, continuously fine, fine, like, you do have to allow them to correct, but if they're not correcting, then you can, you know, proceed further. So there are some things in state code, and we have included that in the ordinance as well, as well as in terms of the civil penalties, you don't have to set that at the highest amount, so if there are certain violations that you're seeing a lot of, or that you want to reduce, you can set your your own civil penalties for violations. You just can't set it higher than what the state code says. So right now, you know, state code says $200, but you could set some small things as a $50 or $100 violation, and then when those stack up, you can move it into another tier. If if you're continuing to have issues and the penalty isn't correcting it, then you can take them to court and settle it that way.
Thank you, ma'am.
So the county is required to send a notice of violation. That's addressed at the end of Article Two, and it, they're required to notify the property owner that they're in violation of the ordinance, so the county can't just find someone without letting them know about the violation first, and that's the zoning administrator's responsibility. Are there any other questions or discussion items for these Article Two items? Another major revision relates to Section two dash five dash one. This is fees and charges. This draft removes the existing administrative fee structure from the zoning ordinance, so the way the county's zoning ordinance is set up currently, all the fees related to zoning applications and permits are in that chapter of the county code. We would recommend that that's removed from the zoning ordinance and that the county adopt a separate fee schedule that includes all county fees, including those associated with zoning. There are a few reasons for that. First, it's easy to have everything in one place during budgeting time. Everything is right there, nothing is getting lost because it's buried in the code, and that's also beneficial for the public as well, to see everything all in one place and not having to go track down different code sections to do so. It also just allows ease of review for staff as those fees need to be updated over time. And then Section two dash six dash one is delinquent taxes and charges, and this is also new content that's not currently in the zoning ordinance, and we've proposed to incorporate an optional state code provision. It allows the county to require any property owner who is applying for a zoning permit to provide satisfactory evidence that any outstanding taxes have been paid in full, and this is just another mechanism that the county can use to receive that payment on any delinquent charges or fees, so a property owner isn't moving forward with an application without making sure they're caught up to date on any property taxes or other outstanding charges that they might have. Are there any questions related to those two items? Is there anything else in Article Two that you all have questions on or would like to discuss? Moving on to Article Three. Article Three covers permits and applications. This is a fairly lengthy article because it includes all permits and applications related to zoning processes, so standards and procedures for zoning text and map amendments, conditional zoning and proffers, special use permits and variances. It also includes information regarding site development plans, zoning permits, and certificates of occupancy. We've included a section related to written determinations of the zoning administrator, as well as appeals of both the BZI and the administrator, and then a section on public hearings and notifications, so advertisements, mailings, placing signs on the property, and what the responsibility of the developer or applicant is during the public hearing and notice process. So again, we've made sure that this article complies with the Code of Virginia. We've updated those state code sections, and we've updated timeframes for application review and decision, as they're written in state code, and then we've also reorganized the section for readability and a user-friendly ordinance. We have proposed to We have proposed to, that administrative review of site development plans be enacted, and then we've also included some additional standards for site development plans and concept plans. The first revision to note with this article is Section 3-1-5, Oath Required. It's a new section of the ordinance that's added as a best practice. It essentially requires the applications for a rezoning. Variance and special use permit are sworn to oath under a notary public. This is just a good safeguard to have in your ordinance. It basically helps ensure that an applicant, when they're submitting the application, that everything is true. Section 3-2-2, Standards and Procedures. So there are several changes of note in this section. The first major change you'll see is that the timeframes have been updated to match what's permissible by state code. The current ordinance gives the board only 60 days from the time of public hearing to decide on a proposed zoning amendment, but state code permits up to 12 months. So we've increased it to allow that full 12 months as it's written in state code. We've also removed the requirement for a site development plan submittal for a zoning permit and have replaced it with a concept plan. So right now, when an applicant is applying, they're required to submit both a concept plan and a site development plan. And so we, something that we've heard a lot of during community engagement, is the desire to simplify the process and make it more business-friendly. And so we've proposed to remove that site development plan to decrease the time and the cost burden for the applicant. We have included text that allows the zoning administrator to require a site development plan in addition to the concept plan if there are certain circumstances where an application is deemed to be very complex and could not be reviewed properly by the county without that additional information that's coming from a full site plan. And that just allows the county to have some flexibility in application review, and if there is an application that would benefit from having a full site plan, the county has that mechanism to require it. And then the current ordinance, the language states that a concept plan could be a freehand sketch. We're proposing to require a certified plat for submittal, and this just essentially allows county staff and you all to have the most accurate and complete information when they're reviewing your application. So for example, setbacks or distance from a floodplain or lakeshore line are really important to review to make sure that application is complying with the ordinance, but if an applicant is just submitting a freehand sketch, that's hard to make that determination alone. I do have a separate slide on site development plans with some more detail and specific changes that we've made to that section. So if you have any questions related to site plan requirements specifically, I'll cover those on a separate slide. But are there any questions related to these two sections of the article?
Yes, ma'am. Section 315, Oath Required, is there any, um, if the oath is broken, how is, let's say they go under oath and they are found out not to be truthful? Is there any teeth to it?
Rebecca, would you be able to provide insight to that?
Yeah, I would say then you would contact your county attorney, and they could pursue that.
Would that language need to be added?
No, no. With the oath required, it's enough that it's in your zoning ordinance. You're saying that they, you know, are committing to what they're saying is true, and then if you find out that what they have said is inaccurate, then you can, you know, deny the application. You can decide if action needs to be taken against them for violating that oath or, you know, what have you.
I've got a question. Going back to conditional zoning and proffers, okay? This question would be possibly, say, somebody's trying to get SUP, Special Use Permit, and BZA starts getting calls, Planning Commission starts getting calls, and Board Supervisors, all of us start getting calls. In that, could we, speaking of proffers, come up with something so that the person won't be blindsided when the actual meeting takes place? Do you see what I'm saying? That could actually resolve a lot of argument and a lot of time during a meeting if they meet the proffers that possibly that the neighbors are discussing.
I think I understand your question. Are you asking whether the board can work with the applicant to either amend the proffers or instate new ones?
Maybe give, offer proffers that they're hearing from the citizens that could go into this, because, you know, if they show up and 20 people show up to speak, and he's met those proffers that, you know, the people are complaining about that they want, then that would shorten the meeting up as well, so. You see what I'm saying?
Sure. So I think I had a slide. Yes. So the board can accept amended proffers, but there are certain criteria.
Right.
So the first criteria is that if they don't materially affect the proposal, so if a proffer's going to substantially change the use or the application, it can't be accepted. The applicant has to voluntarily propose the proffer. So you all, as the board or the BZA, can't say, "You must have this proper proffer, otherwise we're denying your application." And they have to be made prior to the advertisement of public hearing.
Okay.
So if those criteria aren't met, then it would have to go through the application process again. Rebecca, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you.
So it would require, follow-up question. So it would require, if they wanted to change the proffer and had not done it before it was advertised, then the way that's written, they would have, we would, assuming it's the Board of Supervisors, we would have to table it and have a second public hearing the next meeting. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes. I don't believe, and Rebecca can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe they would need to resubmit the entire application, but if they were to amend the proffers, the public hearing would have to be re-advertised with those updated conditions. If the proffers would materially change the application, I believe they would need to resubmit. Rebecca, do you have anything to clarify? If they, if the proffer materially changes the application?
Then my next question is going to be, who's going to determine if some material change or not?
That would be the zoning administrator.
It's all about you, Emily, right there.
Got a quick question on the 3-2-2. Who determines if something is complex? Is there any standards, or is that up for the administrator to decide? And also, when you require a certified plat, what does that entail for the person trying to do the rezoning?
Sure. So to answer your first question, that would be the zoning administrator's authority to determine whether or not a project is complex. We have left that open to interpretation, but generally speaking, if a project is very large, so for example, maybe a very significant mixed-use development that might be more complex, it's located on a lot of parcels, it's relatively new to what the county has seen previously, that might be something that the zoning administrator says, "This is a very complex application. We need some more information, and you need to submit a full site plan." For a certified plat, I don't have the article right in front of me, but there is a list of items that are required to be included. Most surveyors, or engineers, or developers, or whoever is doing that plat would likely include those anyway, but they're spelled out in the ordinance just to make sure that everybody is clear on what's being required.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Good answers. Thank you.
Thank you. There are a few more changes and revisions to note for Article 3. We talked about Section 3-3-3. This is a new section included, and again, it relates to what happens and under what circumstances the board can accept amended proffers. Reconsideration sections are introduced to provide procedures for denied or withdrawn applications. So again, something like this, it's being done in practice, but needs to be explicitly stated in the zoning ordinance as state code allows. So if your application is denied by the board or the BZA, you can't apply again with what is essentially the same application for 12 months. If the applicant chooses to withdraw, they can't apply again with what is essentially the application for six months. And then Section 3-5-3 relates to the period of validity, and it just includes some text to establish validity and expiration for issued variances. And it's just important in being able to provide applicants with clarity about what happens next once a variance is granted, and how long they have to begin construction or make any modifications that are related to the variance. Are there any questions about those sections? So Division 6 of Article 3 is site development plans. If you've had the chance to read over this, you'll notice that there are quite a few changes. And really, to summarize, we've made these changes to provide the applicants with more clarity of what's required of them. We've strengthened some of the requirements for site plan submittals, and that in turn just allows the county to have all of that information at their disposal to review and make decisions related to applications. So currently, site development plans, again, are required at the application phase. The ordinance also currently is written to give the Planning Commission the authority to review and approve or deny a site development plan. And so we've proposed to remove the requirement for submitting a site plan at the application stage and instead require concept plans to streamline review and make the process more business-friendly. And then, this is also important because even though that this is being administratively reviewed, as an applicant submits a concept plan with their zoning, their rezoning, or their special use permit, and the Planning Commission reviews and makes their recommendation, and the Board of Supervisors or the BZA makes their decision, they're, by reviewing and approving what's in the concept plan, they're inherently, by extension, reviewing and approving what's in a site plan. So when an applicant submits a site plan, they cannot change it significantly from what's already been approved in the concept plan and in the application. Otherwise, they would have to reapply and start the process all over again. So the Planning Commission and the BZA and board would still have the ability to review what that use might look like on the property through being able to review the certified plat and the concept plan. And then we've introduced some new requirements for site development plans. These requirements are likely being included already. They're typically standard inclusions that a surveyor or an engineer would put on a site plan, but spelling them out explicitly in the ordinance is important so that the requirements are clear. If there is a surveyor, a developer who's never done work in the county before, if there's new staff that comes down the line, this way, having it in the ordinance spells it out, so everybody is clear and knows what's expected of them. And then you'll see that we've updated review timelines and period of validity for compliance with state code. You can see that site development plans must be approved or denied within 60 days of the official submittal, and then a site development plan that has been rejected but modified and resubmitted accordingly must be acted on within 45 days. So the current ordinance only allows 45 days for review and decision on a site plan, and that's more stringent than what's provided in state code. In this case, that timeframe needs to be increased to the full 60 days and clarified that a 45 timeframe is for site plans that have been initially rejected but have come back, made those necessary changes, and are now in compliance. I believe that staff provided you in your packet with a Berkeley Group Guide to Development that has some more information on concept plans versus full-on site plans, if you'd like to take a look at that after the fact and have some more information about that. And we'd also be happy to answer any questions about that right now. Are there any questions or points of discussion related to site plans in this division? That's correct. We have left that language in there. It's in the current ordinance, and we've left it in this. And I'll just repeat what you said since that is an important point. We did leave language in the ordinance that allows the administrator to waive any of the requirements on a site plan if the administrator deems that they're unnecessary. Are there any other questions? Division 7 is a new division in Article 3. This includes some new text to provide standards and procedures for zoning permit applications. So a few changes of note here include removing the list of uses exempt from a zoning permit. Exemptions are currently written in the zoning permit section of the current ordinance, and we've just proposed to move those to the article that will be related to a use matrix and use standards. And this just kind of has all that information in one place about all the uses in the county, where they're permitted, where they're not permitted, where they might be exempt from a zoning permit, what is required to get a zoning permit. So the actual exemptions aren't changing. The county can consider changing those exemptions if they'd like, but for now, we're taking that and moving that to a separate article just to streamline everything. Standards and procedures have been added, and these are just based on general zoning best practice, and they're also intended to ensure that other county regulations such as the building code are being met in full. And then we've also included some new text saying that just because a development has an approved zoning permit, doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get subsequent approval for any other permits down the line. So just making it clear that just because your zoning permit doesn't, or is approved, don't expect that you're going to get approved for everything else. You still have to go through those proper processes. Division 9 addresses written determinations of the zoning administrator, and this is another division that ties back to state code. The existing ordinance mentions various determinations but doesn't provide procedures or general standards for a written determination from the administrator. So we've just included that up in the ordinance and made sure that everything has been updated to match with state code. And then finally, Section 3-10-2, Appeals to Board of Zoning Appeals Procedure. New text has been proposed to clarify the mailing procedure, as well as to reference pertinent state code section. It addresses what happens in the event of a tie vote among the BZA, and then it's updated timeframes to reflect the Code of Virginia. So currently, the zoning ordinance allows 60 days for the BZA to decide an appeal after its filing. State code allows up to 90 days, and so we've just made that adjustment accordingly. Are there any other questions on Article 3, or any questions related to what's on the slide in front of you? All right. And then two more major changes to Article 3. This one was quite lengthy. Section 3-10-4, Construction in Violation of the Ordinance Without an Appeal to the BZA. This addresses construction that occurs that's not in compliance with the zoning ordinance, and so it incorporates the provisions of state code, again, required by state code, something that we had recommended the county includes in the diagnostic report that we presented in October. And then Division 11 addresses public hearings and notifications. So we've included some text that allow the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to hold a joint public hearing after proper notice. It includes text that prevents land from being zoned to a more intensive use than what was advertised to the public. And then it introduces some additional text related to the requirement of a descriptive summary that has to be included in the advertisement of a public hearing. This division represents things that are all being done in practice, but again, because they're required by state code, they just need to be explicitly spelled out in the ordinance, and this just benefits the public in knowing what's expected of them, especially developers who are required to incur the costs of adjacent property owner notifications for a zoning application. Are there any questions related to these sections?
I've got one. So far, a lot of these have been, and correct me if I'm wrong, some of these are code changes, and some of them are best practices. Just looking at them, is there a way that we can, that, I guess, looking at it, what is required versus what's the best practice when we're looking at this? Because some of it, you know, just looking at it, and just, this may be a code requirement, and it really doesn't specify it as much as a best practice. You see what I'm trying to get across?
Yes, sir. That's a good question. So just generally, as a rule of thumb, if you're reading the article and you see something that says Code of Virginia, and it has a symbol, and then some numbers after it, that likely means that it's required by state code, and the reason that reference is included is to comply with state code. In the editor's notes that are in the draft ordinance, we've also provided some information about which of those sections are required by state code and which of them are best practice. And I should say that even some of the items that are, that include those I should say that even some of the items that are, that include those state code references are optional, but we've included them just because they're good for the county to include. As far as the final ordinance text goes, there won't be anything in the ordinance that says, "This is a best practice," or "This is required," though. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, because if you look at it, like, some of it doesn't have the code of what we're reading now. So, I understand that there have been revisions in the code, but there's also, you know, best practices. So, I'll, you know, when I look at that, I want to say, okay, is this the best practice? Is this something that we have to do, or is this something that is a best practice? So, looking at it, some of it's not jumping out and saying, "Hey, this is code." So, that's, you know, going forward, that's what I want to be sure that, you know, we are in compliance. But the best practices, yeah, that's something we can look at as optional.
To follow up, Mr. Cheshire, I thought that was a really good point. Would it be possible, before we actually vote on implementation of this, to get it color-coded for Virginia codes that are mandatory, color-coded for codes that are optional, a different color, and then best practices, a different color? And that would give you the ability to read a scan. Before we get to the vote.
Let's try.
So, what you're asking for is not in our scope of work, but what we have been trying to do is when you look at the bottom of the page, we do have those footnotes. And so, we are trying to call out things and saying, "This is a change because it's state code. This is an optional provision from state code." Or, "This is a change based on best practice." So, I would say rely heavily on those editor's notes as we move forward through review and drafting. The other thing is, this kind of first bit is a lot of state code. Truly, if I were to kind of sum it up for you, it's all state code except for what you require on your permits and what you require on your site plans. So, those are the places that you really have a lot more play in decision-making. In terms of the timing and those things, that's state code, and we've just increased and allowed you more flexibility.
To follow up, Ms. Ragsdale, is it possible that when you get the draft before we voted, that you all can color-code it?
We can. We can go through the draft and kind of highlight what, and as she mentioned, the timeframes and the fees and things like that. State code sets the maximum. We can, you know, shorten the time periods, or, you know, we can reduce the fees, but we can't go any longer than what state code allows, and we can't fine them any more than what state code allows. So, if you all would like to kind of play with those numbers, we have that flexibility. But what they're saying is, they're trying to give us the most amount of time allowed by state code and the most, the funds that the funds as high as state code would allow.
Yeah, I understand that. I think Mr. Cheshire's point is, we really want to define what is mandatory by the state, and then where we have a little bit of flexibility as a board to approve it. And I'm sure the, I would think the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals would like to have it color-coded too, just for simplicity to see. Because I'd be interested, as a board of supervisors, before I vote on it, to have their feedback on it also, both the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission.
And we can definitely do that. I just want you to keep in mind, would you like for us to differentiate between the code requirements that you have some flexibility on and the ones that you don't have flexibility on?
Right.
Because they're still required by state code, so that's still going to be a state code requirement, but you are going to have some leeway where you can make some changes in the timeframes and fees.
Yeah, I think that would, I think it'd be really important to have it color-coded of, "This is the law. You can't change this. There's some flexibility here." And then, color-coded best practices. So, I mean, obviously, we know best practices. We have flexibility.
Okay. Staff can do that.
One other question. I know you're getting tired. And like I said, every blind hall finds an acorn every once in a while. Good question.
Go ahead.
But, best code practices. Is it, is this industry standard? Is this where y'all are getting this from nationwide, or?
That's a good question. So, as far as code, as far as code goes, Pennsylvania County is required to comply with the Code of Virginia. There's no national zoning code, so to speak. The state outlines Pennsylvania County's roles and responsibilities related to zoning. So, that's where we get much of, or many of, the best practices from, and language to include is from state code. And generally speaking, if something is allowed by state code, it's a good idea for a county to include it, even if it is optional. So, that's one place. And then, we also try to incorporate as much as possible of the current ordinance. So, trying to keep what we can from the current ordinance and bring that over. We also do take a look at other locality zoning ordinances in Virginia, particularly Pennsylvania County's neighboring localities, since they're the most similar to the county geographically, population-wise, in terms of the types of development that you all are seeing. And then, also, at the Berkeley Group, in our time working with different counties in Virginia to help them update their zoning ordinances, we also have some language that we've been able to fine-tune as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. We do have one more article to review, and this one is much shorter. It relates to non-conforming uses, lots, and structures. And then, it provides some detail about repairs and maintenance of non-conformities, when that's permitted and when it's not. So, just as a refresher, non-conformities are legally non-conforming lots, structures, and uses. They were legally established according to whatever zoning laws were on the books at the time the application was permitted and the structure, lot, or use began, but they don't meet current zoning regulations. So, examples of more restrictive regulations that could be adopted that create these non-conforming uses, a minimum lot area is increased, the minimum lot frontage is increased, a setback changes, the maximum height is decreased, or there is a change in district uses. So, just for an example, if a building is legally constructed in a residential district with a 25-foot setback, and then the ordinance is changed to make the minimum front setback 75 feet, then the building would be non-conforming. It was approved legally with the 25-foot setback because that was what was allowed by the ordinance at the time. It's since changed, and it becomes legally non-conforming. It can continue as-is, so as long as it doesn't make any changes to that front setback distance. You should also have a Berkeley Group Guide to Nonconformities that includes some graphics and some more text to break it down in greater detail. And again, Rebecca and I can help answer any questions related to that as well, if you would like. So, Article 9 is based very heavily on state code. And then, we've also reorganized some items for readability, and we've streamlined content. So, the major revisions to note here, the first being section 9-1-1, intent. It just introduces language to clearly explain the intent of the article, and just to say that the purpose of the regulations that address non-conformities is to allow these non-conformities to continue as they were established prior to the adoption of the ordinance, and that they are continuing in accordance with what is permitted in state code. Section 9-2-3, non-conforming structures, buildings, and improvements. This is new content to add some more clear regulations for non-conforming structures. The current ordinance only has minimal provisions related to non-conformities. And so, adding this section helps clarify the nuances between non-conforming structures versus uses, and includes that additional detail. So, the county can take a look at that. This is something that you all have the flexibility to change. It's, not all of it is mandatory by state code, and so, the county can consider whether it would like to include anything additional or amend any of the regulations that are proposed. And then, section 9-2-4, this is the final major revision to note in Article 9, repairs and maintenance. It includes additional details for repairs and maintenance of non-conforming structures, and in what circumstances these repairs and maintenance are appropriate. And then, it includes some new content that addresses repairs and maintenance of manufactured housing. This is not included in the current ordinance, and so, we've just included that information based on what's required by state code. Some of the requirements you see, such as allowing interior renovations or minor cosmetic modifications, that's not required by state code. That's just general best practice. And then, again, the manufactured housing is state code language. Are there any questions related to Article 9? All right. Thank you again for your time today and the thoughtful questions. Just as a reminder, we'll be back in February, that should say 2023, and we'll be reviewing district standards and overlay districts. Are there any final questions?
Anybody? Hey, I did have one on the, going back to Article 2. I was thinking about that, section 2-5-1. And I heard you say that it went from $200 to $500. But it could be up to the locality as to how to stagger those penalties. And so, with that in mind, what do you see other counties doing?
Off the top of my head, I can't recall numbers. Rebecca, do you?
Well, just like criminal charges, a lot of times, you have progressive fines. And to me, in all fairness, you could start at maybe at 100 and progressively go up to 2, 3, up to 500. And that'd give us some flexibility and...
Yeah, I don't see, I can't give you a common number across localities. It's really going to vary. But localities do, you know, kind of set their own. They'll have something separate outside of the zoning ordinance that says, "Here's all of our penalties related to zoning and to other things as well." And so, yeah, there's a, you know, a way to do that, and then you guys can edit that and change that as you see fit.
We put it, we would put it in the budget each year. We have a fee section, the budget message.
I just thought going from 2 to 500, it was quite a jump, you know? Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Any final questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
See you again in February.
All right. Gentlemen, any comments or questions? Who will be adjourned? And ladies? All right.